Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Huntington Township Supervisors to order. Okay, this time, public comment for any agenda items. Anyone? Okay, moving on. Secretary of Treasuries report. Approve the January 11th minute meetings. You guys have a chance to look at it. Any comments, concerns, corrections?
None for me.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I so move.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The bill list for January 31st.
I only have one question. Who's Willow Designs?
What's the new machine shop I got?
Oh, okay, the new one downtown.
Got steel for the rebuild.
I never knew what the name was.
Any other questions? Hearing that, I'll make a motion to approve the bill list.
I'll second it.
We moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill list for February 8th. Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
We moved. Is there a second?
I second.
We moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report. Go ahead, Pat, if you want to talk about that. Send it gets her up there.
Okay, in the general fund, we had total receipts of $50,111.25. Our expenditures were $29,597.85. That left the total in the general fund of $779,973.57. And the ARP, interest received, $19.62. The expenditures, $5,750. That lets a balance in the ARP fund of $226,947.78. In the state fund, not much activity. 22 cents interest received, no expenditures. The balance in there is $5,291.13. And the total in all the accounts as of January 31st was $1,012,212.48.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
I have none.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Miscellaneous items, Pat?
I have none.
Thank you. Roadmaster's report?
Well, we did some winter maintenance and we did around checking for potholes. We have still were a couple potholes that developed over the winter, and that's about it.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Roadmaster? Very good. Thank you. Supervisor's report?
I have nothing.
I have nothing either.
I received a call from a citizen concerned about her neighbor's goats, and we wrote, Gus wrote a letter.
Yeah.
I followed up with them. It seems like they're satisfied.
Oh, I'm glad.
Okay.
I hate to go shooting goats.
Yeah. Zoning report? zoning officer report?
Oh, yeah. That's me.
It is?
Let me get this up here. They issued several permits for the month. There were two to Garmin builders. They got their letter of credit. So now, I had issued those permits. I didn't issue. I was on hold. So now they're issued for a single-family home and a single-story and a two-story single-family home on Tammy Drive. They issued a permit to Margaret Birney on 7064 Old Harrisburg Road to install rooftop solar panels. JVI came to me, brought me plans for interior renovations to the furniture store. In conversations with Wilbur, discovered that they need a permit because it's a change of use furniture store to office space. So I sent them all the paperwork for a permit to do that. I also issued a permit to Woodrow Barnes, or excuse me, waiver, who's getting a tub to shower conversion. And I also issued a building permit to Brian Harner at 250 Peach Glen Idenville Road for a 24 by 30-foot freestanding garage. I issued two occupancy permits. One to Scott McIntyre at Cranberry Road for installed rooftop solar panels. And I issued one to Barry Hershey for yard-mounted solar panels. They're done. Those are the only permits I issued for the month. There was a, the Heedners won't be here this evening because they granted a 60-day extension on their plan, and the Planning Commission recommended that to you. So I would appreciate a motion to accept it. Evidently, there's a problem with a difference in the boundaries on the property that the county discovered. It's actually their mistake, but they have to resolve that in the plans. So that will be coming before the Planning Commission again. We had a report from the county who's working with us on provisions to our SALDO. They have presented a revision to Part IV of the SALDO. That's still before the Planning Commission, and when they're done working with that, they'll recommend it to the supervisors. Let's see, what else we got here? We have a revision to the burn ordinance that has to go to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission had a committee appointed to interview inspection agencies. We did inspect, excuse me, interview the Pennsylvania Municipal Code Alliance, and we met with the middle department, who also does building inspections. The committee will meet and make a recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will also then pass it back to you gentlemen. The only other thing that's come up for the last couple of years, I would mention that the broadband in Adams County literally stinks. We pay for high-speed internet, but we don't get it. So the county has a committee that's working to get better broadband service for the county, and Commissioner Qualley will be meeting with the Planning Commission next meeting to report on the progress they're making. If you watched the news this morning, there was a report about phone companies are going to get out of the landline business. So if you have a corded phone at home, there's a good chance that that's going to be obsolete very shortly. However, for those of us who live out here in rural areas where our cell service varies from where you're located, that might not be a good idea. So if you have any opinions on it, you might want to pass that on to your state representatives. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Gus. I will make a motion. We accept the 60-day extension for the Heedner plan.
I'll second that motion.
We moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Because I have a question. Are those the last two lots in the development?
There's seven more to go.
Seven more? Okay.
There's a total of nine, and they finally, the county is sort of funny. When evidently they sold that property, they were, there's one lot, excuse me, four lots on one side of the street, five on the other, but they were adjacent to one another with the same owner. So they lumped them all in as one lot. But they have four different tracks or five different tracks, which Mr. King, I consulted with him, and so I advised them that as they sold them to issue a separate deed for each lot. It was the simplest thing. My own feeling is they should do a subdivision, and they lumped it together, but it's the county's fault, so.
Well, the county doesn't really split up a piece of land until there's a separately deeded track out for it. So they just always kept it together, and so when the previous owner transferred it to the current owner, they just did it all together. And so the county kept it together. Now, Garmin Builders isn't the owner, right?
No, they're the builder.
So the, did they do a deed, the owner do a deed to Garmin Builders for the lot that they're building?
Uh huh, that's where the problem came in.
Okay.
And the courts, then it'll get transferred to the provides the house.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Gus. Lot solicitors' report?
I don't have anything other than the things in the executive section.
Okay, very good. Scott, engineer report?
The Greenbrier Road culvert replacement project, the grant application was submitted to David Conservation District. Nothing new with the Myers Town Road culvert project. The Planning Commission's working, like Gus said, is on the subdivision land development ordinance update, and no plans were reviewed this past month.
Very good. Any questions for Scott? Our company reports Bender'sville review and approve box card changes and review and approve request for donation to equal fire tax. They submitted some box card changes, correct, Pat?
Right. You should have copies of that.
Yes, we do right here.
And also the request. I asked him if he could come and be present, you know, it makes it a lot easier for them to explain.
Sure.
He said he couldn't.
I assume these changes are just for what the county's doing for everybody, that's not for our companies?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. I'll make a motion. We approve the box card changes. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. He also wrote a letter or an email to us asking that we increase our donation based on what-
Excuse me, can you speak up? I'm not hearing well at this.
Okay. They wrote us a letter, an email, asking for, to change our donation since we don't do a fire tax. So I think we'll take a look at that when we do our regular donations. So we can look at that and decide later. Okay? Okay, thank you.
How much is equal fire tax?
His calculation says $5,470.
Wow.
Which we-
Five thousand.
Correct.
Excuse me, do we have a contract with Bender'sville as we do with York Springs and Tidlersburg?
No. NARIMA report? Paul?
NARIMA met last night. There was a lot of discussion between the A fire chief and the NARIMA people, still discussing the truck. The next meeting will be here in Huntington Township this 6th of March.
Yes.
So I would like if you two guys could be here for, to learn more about what's going on, because they've been talking about this truck for years. Nobody can seem to get on the same page, so.
7:00 P.M.? 7:00 P.M.?
6:00.
6:00? Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Under old business, we had reviewed the Greenbrier and Myers Town Road. I guess there's nothing new to report on that at this time?
Correct. The application for the Greenbrier Road culvert was submitted to the Conservation District, and nothing new on Myers Town.
Okay, very good. Okay, under old business, the point position is not filled at the reorganizational meeting. The first item is the alternate member to the zoning hearing board.
No action on that yet.
Okay.
If anyone's got a suggestion here.
So at this time, it will remain vacant?
Yeah.
Okay. Representative to the Yorks-Adams Tax Bureau. I think we discussed that, nobody?
Yeah. Last year, Non-Tipler, the mayor of York Springs, was our proxy. So that's up to you guys, whether you want to continue that or not.
Okay. If we don't appoint her as our proxy, then we basically don't.
We don't have representation, and they do have, they do struggle to get a quorum, so.
Okay. I mean, I'm willing to be listed as that.
That's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We elect, not elect, but appoint Dave Boyer to the position.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. An alternate, I assume we'll leave that vacant at this time?
Mm-hmm.
Alternate representative to the cog, I mean, I agree to go through those when I can. If nobody else is interested, we'll leave that vacant as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all the old business. New business determined, 24 to 25 Coast Star Salt contract participation amount required. Talk about that, Chuck?
Yeah, I think what we're going to do, we may stay with 100 ton, do with the 100 ton, because if we, we did 100 ton this year, I think next year we'll do 100 ton as well, because if we need it, we can go to 100, 140 ton versus, you know, if we don't need it, when we take the remaining contract, we only have to take 60 ton of it, so.
Okay. Any questions or conversations or discussions? I'll make a motion. We leave the Coast Star Salt contract at 100 tons. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acknowledge Steven and Jennifer Hollinger Ag Security Area application. Basically, they've applied to have their property added to the Ag Security area?
Yes.
So if there's any objections or proposed modifications, we need to receive them by February 21st?
Yes. It's been advertised in the newspaper, the way we're supposed to do it. And there you have a checklist right there, and we have to have a 15-day comment period, then it has to go to our Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission, then with our ASA board. So, you know, we've done the first advertising, and now we're in a comment period.
Okay.
Could you explain what the ASA application is?
An Ag Security Area is deemed by the state as places where typical agriculture would be, take place. There's a lot of Ag Security Areas in this township.
Do they get money for that?
No.
No.
It wasn't like the cleaning, you know, program?
No. No. An Ag Security Area is basically-
Protection.
Protection.
Protection for the right to farm.
For the right to farm. Any questions?
So does it cost them any money?
It's also the first step for farm preservation.
Does it cost them money?
Does it cost stem money?
No.
Not to apply?
All right.
Yes?
What is the address for the application?
300 Mud Run Room.
Any other questions? As Paul said, it's also the first step if you want to have a preserved property. You have to be in an Ag Security Area.
And it requires so many acres, and you have to meet certain criteria to even enroll in it.
So more than 10?
I think it is, but I don't know the exact criteria.
Not for an Ag Security Area, I don't think so, but go ahead. Mr. Rush, you have a comment?
Don't you have to agree before you sign up to go?
I think you do.
I think so, but it was so long ago that we didn't-
I think you agree first, then Ag Security.
I think you're right.
And preservation.
Yes, but you have to, you can't be preserved if you're not in an Ag Security.
Yes.
Right.
So they, so they would then go for their conservation?
Don't some of the farms around here go for, they get conservation easements, if I'm not mistaken?
That's what we're, that's what we're referring to as far as preserved properties.
Oh, okay.
It's not mandatory.
Yeah, you're not, you don't, just because you're automatically in an Ag Security Area doesn't mean you're a preserved farm. It doesn't, it's not-
Well, they apply for it, yes. And then they do get money for that.
If, if they're accepted. If they're accepted, it's not automatic. Just because you're in an Ag Security Area doesn't mean you can be preserved.
No.
No. That's a completely separate program, but this is one of the requirements if you choose to go that route. Okay. Next item is approve equipment purchase.
Yeah, I would like to purchase a turbine blower for blowing leaves and debris out of side gutters. The cost of it is $9,248. Like the person said, if it would be possible.
Okay, any questions or comments about that?
I'd like to ask if it's going to blow the leaves out, you put them in a container or something?
No, it's a big turbine blower. It'll blow them back in through the woods.
Does it grind them up?
No.
No.
It just blows them back in?
Blows back in the woods.
So the idea of this is it keeps the culverts clean?
Keeps culverts clean, keep debris from, when we have rainstorms, from going down and plugging across pipes.
So the water doesn't lay in the culverts?
Yeah. So you guys don't- The culvert doesn't create washing out onto the road and so forth.
Okay.
Just make it a lot easier.
Okay.
To do that, and we wouldn't have to be chasing, you know, debris and weeds and culverts.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions for that? I'll make a motion. We approve the purchase of the blower for $9,248. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. York Springs Fire Company appreciation banquet invitation. They've invited us to their, let's save this packet somewhere. It is March 9th of this year. Anybody want to attend? We just have to let them know. I mean, you don't have to, we don't have to let them know today, but let Pat know if you want to go by the-
End of February.
By the end of February. Okay? Thank you. Pennsylvania State Police survey regarding their services. It's in here somewhere. They sent us a survey and asked us to reply, and we can post it in a lobby municipal building. Anybody else wants to reply? So there's a website where you can visit and post if you're concerned or have comments. Okay?
There are some of the notices over there on that table.
What is PSP?
Pennsylvania State Police.
Oh, really? Well, they do the most arresting in the county.
In this township, they do all the arresting.
No, but the Ginsburg Police is second.
Okay, next item. Tammy Myers Affleck presents supplemental employees benefit information for consideration.
Hi.
Oh, hi.
Thank you for allowing me. I spoke with Pat, and she invited me here this evening. I am an independent representative for Affleck and wanted to go over kind of a little bit what Affleck was and see if it might be a good fit for the township employees. Now, it's been a while since we, that I spoke with Pat, so I don't recall if you offer medical insurance to your employees, but Affleck is a supplemental, so they're paying cash benefits directly to the employees or the, yeah, I'm sorry, the participants, irregardless of any other insurance that they might have in place. Okay? There's a number of policies that are available, and I don't know that we want to get into all of those this evening.
Sure.
Well, we would need three employees to participate in any one Affleck policy to be able to form the account. The employees own the policy, so even if they would separate employment, not only do they get to keep it, but they would keep them at the group rates that they receive them going through the township payroll. Okay? It's a huge benefit. It really enhances your benefit offerings. It protects your employees, you know, financially if, you know, they have an accident or injured or they have a medical condition. There's also two programs that Affleck, well, one program we do is individual agents. It's a recruiting assistance that if you are looking for employees instead of investing the money in deed and things like that, we take our ads and change it to your ad for one week, once a year. So it kind of saves you money in that regard. And then you may or may not be eligible. This is something Affleck has partnered with Get Hired and potential tax credits for any new hires you have as well. Okay? Do you have questions?
The only question I have, how many people do we have? We only have two, two people that have health insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, at this time, we only have two employees that receive health insurance.
Okay. Yeah, they don't need to participate in any, in health insurance. Some of the policies they do, the majority of them, that they do not. We would just need three employees of the township to participate in, you know, one might get dental, one might get cancer, you know, one might get short-term disability.
Okay.
Okay?
I understand.
All right. Typically, we do this on a voluntary basis. This is something that the township could contribute if, you know, the funds allow to build that benefits package. So you have a lot of different options when it comes to Affleck and making it available to your employees.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. It's very expensive as people get older. What are, what are, the employee K's, does the employer also have to pay towards them?
They do not, and Affleck's rates are actually very inexpensive. There are a few policies that are age-banded. The older you are, when you get into it, you're going to pay a little bit more. The age-banded policies, once you're in it, you are locked in at that rate. But our most popular, our cancer policies, accident policies are not age-banded. And we also offer now guaranteed-issue life insurance as well with simplified underwriting.
Okay. Thank you. We'll let us, we will consider that.
And I'll leave this packet here with Pat, and she can kind of review it. It goes into a little bit more detail as well.
Okay, very good.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the new business. Subdivisions, land development, JVI, land development progression and pre-development agreement.
The JVI is, we signed a pre-development agreement last time.
Right.
Land development plan is still in the process.
Okay. The Heedner subdivision, we already talked about that.
Right, that's-
We granted the extent, accepted the extension.
Thank you.
So any other, that's all the subdivisions?
No, and that's it for now.
Okay, right to no request. We had January 12th of '24, Rita Gange. Any and all written notes taken in her official capacity as in by Secretary Pat Davis at the Board of Supervisors meeting held on January 11th of '24. January 29th, Rita Gange. Any and all invoices for professional services rendered and submitted by Salzman Hughes for the month of December 23. Okay. Upcoming meetings, the Planning Commission meets on the 20- Upcoming meetings, the planning commission meets on the 26th at 7:00. Our next meeting is March 14th at 7:00. Paul mentioned the NARIMA meeting on March 6th at 6:00. Okay. Public comment? Marita Gange?
Yeah, I have a question about last month. One of the residents asked about the trash issue, and you had, the solicitor indicated he'd be reporting on that. I see that you're having an executive session. I wanted to find out, who is the attorney that you've been speaking with about this?
Up until now, it was just a client representative. With my most recent letter that they sent, they said they referred it to their legal team, and I haven't heard an official response from their legal team.
Yeah, because in getting the, your previous bills, since, I mean, you've been working on this since June, and it's like eight months later, and that isn't even including the bills previous to that where you had to get all the information from Gus and create that spreadsheet, et cetera. So, okay, so you haven't been dealing with a counterpart, an attorney?
No, it was with Pat Herity and Michelle Devering, who are the.
Yeah, they're managers. I looked her up, yeah.
And the reason that she said, we never received a response, is she said she never got the letter that I sent in August, which is, is why they said they never responded to the proposal that we made at that point.
I'd like to just ask the question, and don't take it personal, but I don't know many employees getting a 4% pay rate at this time. I'm not disappreciating the work, but to me, at this time, it just doesn't seem prudent to do the 4% thing now when everything is sold with the taxpayers' money. I just wanted to, I've heard comments in the community about it, because I'm not getting the 4% raise.
Thank you.
Do you don't collect social security?
Pardon?
Do you collect social security?
Jesus. It's kind of a personal question.
Then you got a 4% pay increase, because I collect social security, I got a 4%.
It's wiped out.
It's wiped out? Yes, it's wiped out, but that doesn't mean you didn't get it.
That's not the issue. The issue is you're taking taxpayers' money to pay, give everybody 4%, why not 2%? I'm just wondering why 4%?
In the last eight years I've been here, we've always given cost of living increases to everybody. Last year, it was a 10% because of the cost of living. This year, it was 4% because of the cost of living. That's been our policy for the last eight years.
Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, executive session. We have two items to discuss. The first one is discuss litigation, Dockets 23-SU-0285, Christopher M. Miller, Heather M. Miller, and Samuel Akers versus Adams County Uniform Construction Code Board of Appeals, and Docket 2023-SU-0286, Christopher M. Miller and Jennifer M. Miller and Samuel Akers versus Huntington Township Zoning Hearing Board. And the second item is discuss potential litigation with waste management. We will now go into executive session.
What candidate is the bank statement?
Okay, we are now out of executive session. Is there anything else on our agenda we need to deal with tonight? Have you had a more public comment about anything? Hearing none, I will make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.